... followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is the approval of the agenda. I'd like to make a note to all the board members that Item D, Approval of State Compliance Report, is removed from the agenda this evening. Do we have a motion from the floor for approval? Approved by, motion approved by Mark Gregory, second by Dr. Burgos. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Agenda passes. By approving the agenda, you also approved the following items: Approval of School Board Meeting Minutes, October 16th, 2014, and October 20th, 2014; Approval of Board Policy Revision, Second Reading; Policy Number 1.403, Board Meeting Agendas; Approval of Recommendations for Field Trip Fee Requests; Approval of City of Franklin and Tennessee Department of Transportation Acquisition of Real Property for Public Utility and Drainage Easement, 810 Hillsborough Road, Franklin, Tennessee; Approval of Perry Creek Elementary School Pavilion; and Approval of Sunset Middle School Sidewalk. At this time, we'd like to move to public, um, public comment. We have several speakers this evening, and so I would like to ask everybody to please limit your discussions to the maximum of three minutes. If you get close to the three minutes, I may just give you a little hand signal to let you know that you're, you're coming up on it, but otherwise, please limit it to three minutes so that everybody has a chance to speak this evening. We'll begin with Gary Graham from the 2nd District.
Thank you. I would like to thank you for the school board for bringing that aside. On this calendar for next year and all your hard work in making Williamson County schools the best, and I'd like to yield my, rest of my time to the next speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Our next speaker is Julie West.
I've heard a number of people ask the question, why would the school board, and especially the new school board members, address an issue as controversial as Christmas so early? I want us to just look at the absurdity of that question. What controversy? Neither the U.S. Supreme Court nor the Tennessee State House find Christmas to be particularly controversial. Both have indicated instances where nativity scenes may be placed on public property. Both have indicated that the phrases Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah are protected speech. A Maryland school ignited a national news, news coverage storm when they removed Christmas and Hanukkah break from their school calendars, yielding to pressure from outside groups. The controversy wasn't limited to the East Coast, but it was reported nationwide. Now bear in mind that for some time, we haven't been able to say that or write the word Christmas on December 25th on calendars in Williamson County, Tennessee. Now, some have said that this position was ushered in by a former school member who was an outspoken atheist, or one who was soundly defeated when he ran for the State House, but clearly neither those views nor those of the grassroots organizations that say that they're vocally promoting his positions represent the bulk of Williamson County residents. If they were representative, now we'd be forced to believe that the buckle of the Bible Belt is less devout and less conservative than the American Northeast. Again, a subject as controversial as Christmas, what issue could the board possibly address that's less controversial than Christmas? Common Core? Textbooks? Islamic wardrobe options on the district's own website? Are those elected to represent us in the community simply to rubber stamp anything that comes out of the central office? And how long should district officials wait to acknowledge a universally accepted fact? December 25th is Christmas, and we don't have school on December 25th, or December 24th, or days around it, or Hanukkah, because the schools would be empty? Because in this area, faith and family, not any government institution, are still the center of our community. And while we debate about these, and they're central to our nation's history, by the way, I wonder if, if school board members were informed about last session's Merry Christmas bill? I wonder if, if for that matter, school board members were informed about the trial taking place on Wednesday involving, involving a district PTO and tens of thousands of dollars in missing funds? And if felony charges and funds that were to go to use to help students don't rise to the level of needing to inform the board, what does? Finally, it's been well over a month since I submitted a perfectly legal public records request, and still no one will tell me how many emails have been compiled on my personal family. Now, these are the controversies that we should be talking about unless we are to fall victim to the tyranny of the minority. In closing, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and God bless us everyone.
Thank you, Ms. West. Our next speaker is Lona Hines. Is that correct?
It's Lana Hines. That's okay. I'm from District 4. December of 1975, Anna Mae Aquash, a Canadian Native American, was kidnapped in Denver, Colorado, hauled across state lines to the Rosebud Indian Reservation in South Dakota. There, her kidnappers blindfolded this mother of two, led her out into the driving snow, forced her to kneel, and shot her in the head, threw her body, still living, off of a cliff where she was permitted to linger before curling up into the fetal position and dying. This act was perpetrated by an organization known as AIM, or the American Indian Movement. June 26th of 1975, two FBI agents were under siege on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation in South Dakota. The agents found themselves pinned in crossfire and wounded. Leonard Pelcher and two other members of AIM fired on the agents more than 125 times, 114 of which came from an AR-15 carried by Leonard Pelcher. AIM member Pelcher approached the two agents and killed them. Each died from gunshots, gunshots to the head fired at point-blank range. Pelcher was later quoted as saying, "That MF'er was begging for his life, and I shot him anyway." June 27th of 1975, American Indian Movement bombs the visitor center at Mount Rushmore. February 27th, 1973, AIM launches a paramilitary occupation of Wounded Knee, South Dakota. The siege lasted 71 days or 10 weeks. Native Americans who stood against AIM were murdered, raped, beaten, and held captive. Sacred tribal items were stolen and sold to outsiders by the AIM terrorists. Because of AIM's actions, this small town in the middle of America had the highest crime rate in the United States at the time. I am a resident of Tennessee for 20 years, and I'm a resident of Franklin for 10, but I am also a native South Dakotan. I was raised, from birth, on the Standing Rock Sioux Indian Reservation. I have both Native American and Caucasian family members, and I assure you that everyone in my former community remembers fearing AIM and the terror reports perpetrated by them on the local and state news. Their reign was called and referred to still today as the Reign of Terror from 1973 to 1975. So what does this have to do with us here today, right now in Franklin, Tennessee? Imagine my horror when looking at the Williamson County website. My 5th graders, my 5th graders' social study requirement is AIM, the American Indian Movement. AIM is being taught as a heroic and a legitimate organization by our school system. This group is still today considered by the FBI a terrorist organization. Many of its former members have denied being a part of it and have been convicted of federal crimes against humanity. It is at best a questionable example of Indian rights and a weak but militant voice for the Indian nations it is said to represent. While there may be a need to teach our children about the indigenous peoples of North America and our continent, this organization is certainly not one to uphold as an example. I want to ask you, whose job is it to make sure our children are exposed to accurate And I want to know how the person who chose AIM or the American Indian Movement as a proper subject of study still has a job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Our next speaker is Chuck Shelton.
Thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. I appreciate your hard work in serving the parents and students of Williamson County. My, my appeal to you today is to change the wording of your revisions to Williamson County Textbook Policy 4.401. You are making these changes to conform to the wording and intent of Tennessee Code Annotated 49. These are in accordance with Senate Bill 1602, which was passed into public law as, as Char, Chapter 981 with the governor's signature on May 22nd, 2014. Because of this new law, changes were made to the Tennessee Code Annotated. Specifically, I would like you to change the new policy to conform in certain parts to the intent of the bill. First, with regard to subject matter experts, as proposed Williamson County policy stated, the board may appoint experts in the grade level or subject matter field for the textbooks and instructional materials to be reviewed. Experts may be college professors or credentialed subject matter specialists. Upon recommendation by the superintendent, the board shall determine whether an individual is a credentialed subject matter specialist. Experts so appointed shall not be voting members of any committee, but may present information to the committee for consideration. However, Public Chapter 981, which changed Tennessee Code Annotated, states that, quote, "The local board may also appoint experts in the grade level or subject matter field for which textbooks and instructional ma, materials are to be reviewed." Experts may be college professors or credentialed subject-mattered experts. Comment, the law does not speak to whether or not the subject matter experts shall be voting members. All members of a committee are assumed to be voting members, with the exception that the director of schools must be an ex officio member of the committee. Proposed change, the board may appoint to a committee as member experts in the grade level or subject matter field for which textbooks and instructional matters are to be reviewed. Experts may be college professors or credentialed matter specialists or otherwise recognized experts on a subject. These experts are voting members of the committee. Okay. Second change, the superintendent shall be, prepare a recommended list of committee members for the board to consider. I'd like to see that changed. The board shall prepare a recommended list of, of committee members for the board to appoint. Now, I know, now I know that you, you changed it at the last working session from the superintendent and, I'm sorry, the executive committee, which is the superintendent and the chairman of the board, to appoint the members. Is that, I think that's correct. Okay. So, anyway, I'd like the, the board as a whole to be listed there instead of that, that committee. Three, insert language from Senate Bill 1602. The board shall determine the number of members on the committee based upon the relative size of, of the LEA. This expressly means that the board, not the superintendent, determines the size of the committee. Proposed change, the board shall determine the s, number of members of each committee. Four, the current revision of the policy says the superintendent board member shall be ex officios of all committees appointed and shall not be a voting member. With regard to state law, Public Chapter 981 only declares that the director of schools and the LEA adopting textbooks or instructional materials under this partial service and ex officio member of all committees appointed under Section C. Okay. This only defines the role of the superintendent as a non-voting member of, of all committees. It does not define the role of the board membership. Since the board constructs the composition of, of the committees and the appointment of these committees, it also has the power to appoint board members to the committees as voting members. Proposed, one board member may be a member of, on a committee. All committee members shall be voting members, with the exception of the superintendent, who shall be an ex officio member of all committees. So what I did is, I talked to the Senator Mike Bell that, that was the actual sponsor in the Senate of Senate Bill 1602. So I said, I gave him two questions. I said, can school board members be voting members of the textbook committees which that board forms? His answer to me is, yes, the law allows school board members to serve as voting members. Then I, I, there were so many changes to the policy, I rewrote it, and I sent it to him. So I said, here's my question. Does my rewrite of the policy violate any legislative intent of your bill as signed into law? And he said back to me, no, from my reading of your rewrite, it does not violate any legislative intent. So what I'm asking you to do is take a careful look at that. I can provide my rewrite to you if you'd like, and I think that would be a good start. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Our next speaker is Ms. Coleman.
I wanted to take a few minutes just to talk about the school calendar and the proposal to change it to being called Christmas break in lieu of calling it holiday break or winter break. In full transparency, I did email the board, but it was yesterday, and most of you probably didn't read it, but in full transparency, I'm, I'm not a Christian. I celebrate something called solstice, or yule. I am a religious minority in this county. I've lived in Tennessee. I was born at Vanderbilt Hospital. I've lived here my whole life in the South. I'm one vote, when you, you know, you run for elections. I'm one vote in a sea of thousands of Christian votes, and I'm aware of that. Like, I, I know, I know I'm a minority when it comes to this, but at the end of the day, it's not about my vote. What it's about is the children. I'm going to shamelessly plug this adorable little boy. This is my child. He's a kindergartner in Williamson County schools, and like me, you know, he has a different belief than most of his classmates. Actually, he's five, so he doesn't have much belief, let's be honest. The point is, holiday break, keeping it neutral like that encompasses Christmas, which I have no problem with Christmas. It encompasses Hanukkah. It encompasses New Year's, which isn't even religious. I think almost all of us celebrate that, and it does encompass my holiday again, which is the 21st, which is yule. I don't want to take away Christmas from anyone. That's, I'm not asking you to celebrate my holiday with me. I just ask that you respect my family enough not to push yours on mine in a public school setting. I would be more than happy to break bread with you on Christmas Day, to share stories, but it has to be on, on our terms and in peace, which is the whole purpose of the holiday season. If you force it on, you're, you're taking away the idea of peace, which I think is a very important concept for all of the holidays that fall this time of year. Does having the words Christmas break on the school calendar affect how you will worship? Are you not going to celebrate Christmas on December 25th because it's not on the school calendar? I mean, personally, if you don't put my holiday on there, I am still going to celebrate. It's not going to make a dime's worth of difference how my family celebrates, and I venture to say it's not going to affect if you celebrate your holiday or worship your God. So I want to talk about why it's good to call it holiday or winter break, and, you know, why, why is it good to be neutral? Because that's what it is right now. It is neutral. First, it'll, you know, it does protect the county from acquis, accusations, accusations of trying to establish a, a state religion, or trying to establish a religion within the county, because it's not going to give preferential treatment to just one religion. And it allows all students to practice their own personal faith. It encourages inclusiveness and diversity because it honors that melting pot that's great, that's a great part of American history. It keeps the season about peace, joy, and love, and doesn't turn it into being a season about pride, or who has the better holiday. And the most important is, it communicates to children that being different is okay, that being a religious minority, it's okay. It's going to, it discourages bullying kids who aren't Christian. You know, I've actually recently had talks with my 5-year-old, he'll be 6 next month, where he's already felt pressure at school, where other kids, you know, where he's shared a little bit about what he is with other children, and some people have said rude things to him. Of course, this happens around Halloween, which is big for us. And the thing is, I watched my 5-year-old's heart be broken because he felt like he wasn't being accepted into school. And we can't change, children are going to do that, children are going to be mean to each other, but let's not encourage it at the school board level. Let's communicate to the children that we welcome every Suda into Williamson County, regardless of their faith, regardless of any minority there are, that every kid is welcome, and that us adults are going to get along, and that we will be neutral and tolerant of each other, because, you know, again, this might make it sound like I'm trying to say everybody should be, get a trophy. That's not what I'm saying, because faith is not a competition. It really isn't. If it was, the Christians won, you're the majority here. But, you know, it, it's about making all the students feel welcome. So, you know, just to close, because I know, get close on time, you know, I, again, I've been here my entire life over, well, I'm not going to say the age, and being a religious minority in the South is hard. In fact, you know, we don't talk about it because we have to fear, you know, people being violent against us. I don't want my son to have to know that fear at 5 years old. I want to carry that burden for him for now. It's something he'll have to deal with when he gets older, but in a public school setting, he should feel safe, he should feel welcome, and he should feel tolerated. So, again, I just ask you please keep the calendar neutral, and at that, I do wish all of you peace. Merry Christmas for those who celebrate it, Happy Hanukkah, and Blessed Solstice, if there's one other, probably nobody else in the room, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Our next speaker is Ms. Anderson.
Part of me, because I'm not a public speaker at all, so I'm going to be very nervous. So I'm probably going to repeat some of the things that Christie just said. I would also say that I am of a minority, but not necessarily of a religious minority. I am a single mother of a daughter who is biracial, so we have had several incidences at school where she has been teased for that, for that reason. And so today, I just, I wanted to remind you that we're not, there's not a lunacy of minorities. This is not something that is, just something that you have to ignore. I think when you signed on to be a school board member, it was to think about all the children, the children, not who voted for you, not the adults, the parents, it was the children, and what is most, what is best for them. So I just want to start with a quote from To Kill a Mockingbird. "If you could learn a simple trick, scout, you will get along a lot better with all kinds of folks. You will never really understand a person until you consider things from his point of view, until you climb inside of his skin and walk around in it." By changing this school calendar, you're not doing that. You're changing it to exactly what you have known your whole life. I would suggest, take a visit to a synagogue, go to a homeless shelter, and don't, don't volunteer there. Go sit down and speak to somebody who's less fortunate than you. And I don't mean, you know, where you're sitting there helping them, or you're just actually just having a conversation with them. Put yourself in a situation where you're the minority. Have you ever been in that situation, where you're the minority? Because I know I have. I've been the only female supervisor at the General Motors Plant. I've been the only white person at my job right after college. You know, it makes it for a different perspective. And if you're, just as my daughter told me when we were discussing this, her friend is Jewish, she made her promise that she would not tell anybody in the school that she's Jewish, because people make fun of her. This is a bullying issue that we're, we're essentially making it all right by making this policy in, in my eyes. So I'm going to give you a few tips on empathy, and I, maybe some of you don't need them, but if you could just put aside your own viewpoint for a moment and try to see things in others' viewpoint. Imagine that you're Jewish for a moment, and you're surrounded by Christians, that you're the minority, and think about how that might feel, day in and day out, where you have to hear all of the time, you know, Merry Christmas all the time, even though that's not what you believe. Just imagine how that feels. Validate the other person's perspective. Obviously, it's great that you guys feel so passionate about your, your views and beliefs. That's great, but it's no place in school.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Our next speaker is Mr. Todd Salon.
See if you can hear me. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm from District 9, and I was before you at the last meeting and asked you to end the divisiveness, the silliness, the controversy, and to start working toward providing our students a better experience. That's ultimately what you're here for, what you signed up for. Yet the controversy continues, and I want to know why. One example, and I'm not going to rehash, everybody knows kind of everything that the board's been through in the last couple months, but when you ran for office, you ran for a nonpartisan position. You agreed that you'll represent the entire community, and you'll refuse partisan politics. Yet one board member, identifying himself as such, wrote a letter to the editor in the Williamson Herald, starting with, "The red wave that covered America after Tuesday's election was a strong repudiation of President Obama's agenda and policies that have clearly failed over the last six years." I have no issue with the letter, Mr. Gregory, no issue that you wrote the letter. The fact that you said you're a school board member, you crossed the line. I ask you to stop, and please perform your duties to what you agreed to sign up for. Divisiveness, the calendar. Tell me when my kids are off school. That's all I need to know. December 21st to January 1st. I just made my daughter a dental appointment. I need to know when she was going to be off, so I could fit the dental appointment. Doesn't matter, I know when Christmas is, you know, I know Hanukkah, just every year, I know there's other holidays, doesn't matter. When are my kids off of school? It's all I need to know. At the last meeting, I heard constituents talk about, hey, when we were talking about Common Core, we're behind China, we're behind India, quite honestly. I think in 20 years from now, it's going to be more like Africa, Eastern Europe, and other places as the world develops. Our kids, they're going to grow up to live in places like Addis Ababa, Berlin, Nashville, San Francisco, Shanghai, Sydney, wherever it might be. They'll work with others of different skin colors, they'll work with others of different races, different religions, even others of other, different sexual preferences. Regardless of your personal beliefs and value systems, the reality is, is that we all work with different people today, and we work with these diverse folks. Mr. Cash himself acknowledged, and I paraphrase her, so I apologize if I don't get the words exactly right, that you were talking about diversity at a work session when you said, "We have a diverse county right here. We have up in Brentwood a huge Korean population, we've got Chinese, Hispanic immigrants, we've got every walk of life from America right here in Williamson County." To then have such narrow-mindedness, such having a labeling of holidays that really excludes so many students, our children, they'll grow up disadvantaged and unprepared for the real world that awaits them. So I, I think that's really important, that we leave the calendar neutral. One board member says that a majority of folks have Judeo-Christian beliefs, and why should they not get Christmas? Well, a majority of the population doesn't like the 70 mile an hour, 70 miles per hour speed limit, but, you know, that's what we have, and that's with the law, and you have to go with what the law. People talk to the founding fathers, so... So, Thomas Jefferson himself said, "It does me no injury to my neighbor to say there are 20 gods or no gods. It neither picks my pocket nor breaks my leg." Other people talk about the founding fathers, and I'm a proud American, and I'm glad they founded the country, and I'm really appreciative to be here, but we have three females on our Board. Well, 225 years ago, we founded the Constitution. It was only 94 years ago, less than a lifetime ago, that you were even allowed as females to vote. You probably would not be on that Board sitting here today if it was up to the founding fathers. And so, I think my point is, is that society has evaded, has grown and evolved over time, so let's go. I'll skip my next point, real quickly, I'll finalize. We have problems, kids without classrooms and teachers, kids without nutritious meals, kids without a safe way home. I appreciate if you guys focus on those issues, help folks out there, leave the academics to the people that are trained to do it, the people with the PhDs in educational policy. It would be like somebody, for you guys to go and start setting academic policy would be like somebody who's on the Board of the Williamson County Medical Center telling Dr. Burgos how to perform surgery. It's just insane. We've got a great leadership team, they've had great growth, we're easily the top county in Tennessee or the top school district, and we've grown from already a high plateau, which is very difficult to do. So, please focus on some of the challenges, some of the growth that we have, leave the religion out of the public schools, it doesn't belong, it may be allowed legally in other parts of the public life, it's not allowed in the school system. And let's end the silliness, and let's start focusing on the future and the growth of this great district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salon. Our next speaker is Ms. Marta Fuget. Is that close?
Marta Fuget.
Fuget, thank you.
Thank you for your time. I am a first-generation immigrant from South America. I'm proud to say I am an American. Until my father died and my mother got Alzheimer's, there was not an August 28th that passed that each one of my six siblings and I did not get a call from one of them to remind us to give thanks for the opportunity that this great country had given us. I'm sorry, I get emotional. My parents were very patriotic, and as we pledged the legions, we did say the word God, and we do pledge legions to this country. I believe I can take the liberty to say, I speak for a great majority of the Spanish community. My husband is black, my first husband was Caucasian, we had a son, we have a biracial son by that marriage, I have a biracial daughter from my current marriage, and I have four black adopted children. So, if you want to talk diversity, come to my house. As my husband says, we have the corner market on diversity coalition. I first want to address how sad I was when I heard someone come up to the podium and address the disappointment of the request for prayer. Most of all, the use of the person's word, I was, for me to use, I was appalled at the comment that one of you had violated the spirit of the law when you asked in an email for the recipients to pray for our schools. I believe, if you remember, in, I don't know, countless times that President Obama has spoken, he has requested the nation to pray. How many times have there not been school shootings? How many times have there not been terrible hurricanes, tsunamis, anything happened, not just in the United States, but all over the world? And President Obama has not violated the spirit of the law by requesting the nation to pray. For whatever nation that was, for whatever people, for whatever God they believed in, he asked for prayer. Where has this country gone, where we are going, and where are we going if we cannot express the given liberty to ask for prayer in an email? Now, my question to you as Board members is, why is literature being used to educate our children from a group called CARE, who has been named as a terrorist group from several Middle Eastern countries? This literature is being used to teach our children about Islam. You want to talk about religion being out of our schools? Why are we talking about Islam? Why are we being, why are our children being taught about Islam? If we are getting these things for free, then bless their heart, but I'm sure that many other religious communities would freely give things for Christianity, Judaism, or any other religion, and donate those things for free. If we are paying for it, then somebody should be ashamed for using our tax dollars to pay for these things. We need input from experts, community members, teachers, taxpayers, and parents to be on the textbook review committee. Now, I will use the right this country has given me, and I pray that God will give you wisdom to do the best for our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Fuget. The next speaker is Ms. Leah Quant.
My husband reminded me to adjust the microphone so you could hear me this week. I want to talk about math and Common Core again. Today, I voluntarily tutored two students, one from Williamson County, one from Davidson, in Algebra II. The one from Williamson County came to me and she said, "I'm lost." I was out of town last week, I missed a week with her. And I said, "What's your problem?" And she handed me a sheet, and she said, "The teacher worked these problems for us, but I don't understand them." I said, "Did you ask a question?" She said, "Yes, but I still don't understand it." And so, we went through them, step by step by step, and it turns out, the teacher had left off a couple of steps in the explanation. She said, "Is that all there is to it?" And I said, "Yes." I said, "Your assignment for me, I know you don't have homework tonight because you had a test today, but your assignment is to go back and to work some problems like this so that you do understand it fully." I said, "Do you ever use your textbook?" She said, "Rarely." Sometimes the teacher will assign maybe five or six problems out of a textbook, and that's it. But she went away understanding today. The second was a young man, he goes to a very prestigious high school in Davidson County. I don't have to name it. Last year, he was doing geometry with Common Core. This year, the math teachers at that school have had the courage to say, "This is a bunch of baloney. You're stifling our students. These are our best and our brightest, and you're holding them back." They have gone back to using textbooks. I challenge you to do the same in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quant. The last speaker signed up on our page, we only have room for 10 speakers, allowing three minutes each, which equals out to 30 minutes. Our last speaker is Jason Grant. Now, there are several others who wrote their names beyond that, and on the back page, on another page of paper altogether. It's very unlikely that we can get to everybody. Jason, Mr. Grant, you're welcome to speak first. But we may be able to get one or two, and that's the best I can do. So, please go ahead and speak.
Okay, let me preface, because there's been crediting by everybody that's been up here. A fifth-generation Tennessean, my great-grandfather was a World War I veteran, my grandfather and two great-uncles are World War II veterans, and my brother-in-law is currently over in Qatar right now, serving our country. So, what I'm about to say to you may actually be a surprise, I'm a fat white guy, so I'm in the majority. I grew up in this area, attended Christian churches, but I will say that I'm actually opposed to changing the holiday break to Christmas. And the reason is not because it's not championed by my family, or my mother's family, or anything else, but more along the lines of having an inclusive environment. And I spoke to you last time about having a world-class educational system. And I think one of the things you have to consider is the fact that if we do have a world-class educational system, it's going to have to be inclusive. It cannot be exclusive. Two years ago, Christmas Day in 2011, actually, three years ago, I apologize, my wife took a phone call at 8:30 in the morning, and then again at 8:30 at night with her job because she had been mandated, as she had for the prior six months, for her employer to have offshore conference calls. Her employer was large enough internationally that they have offshore resources, she led the team, she was mandated that we had to take those calls. A couple of weeks later, however, this particular group had a national religious holiday, and they let that group off. I was furious, you can't imagine. 8:30 at night for most folks is bedtime, if not sooner. I had been doing that, pulling weight for two children on my own. I'm good, but I'm not great at being a dad at that time. So, it really, really bothered me to the point that I told her, "Look, that's kind of the last straw, that's the one that breaks the camel's back, you're going to have to find a new employer." And subsequently, she did. However, I can't imagine being a minority and having that cram down my throat that my religious belief, one of the most sacred First Amendment rights that we have, is not valuable enough or important enough to be given the preference that one particular religion is. And I think that's the message, intended or not, that you would be sending to the wider community that is, again, like Mr. Cash pointed out, becoming more and more diverse every day. And again, I want to get that housecleaning step out of the way, and I know that I'm running up on time. That's the dirty, that's the bad. The good is, with respect to teachers' pay, math, science, education, you're not only competing against, as pointed out, Mr. Peterson, you're not only competing against other districts with respect to their pay, but you are competing against the business community at large for that same talent. Data science is a field that's rapidly sucking up all the mathematicians that they can find. Finance, another area where mathematics is hugely popular. Engineering is both science and math, depending on who you talk to. So, as a parent, if you need assistance, and I'm sure that you can get other parents to support you in this decision, if you need to approach the county commission for money, count me in, I'll volunteer. And I'm sure you can find other parents that will support that as well, to increase that teacher pay, to make sure that we get the best teachers, and to continue to have the best educational system in Tennessee, and hopefully, tops in the world as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. To the other members of the audience who wrote down their names, my apologies, we must move on with the business of the Board. But Board members usually stick around after the meetings, and so, please, we would love to hear from you, so please approach us after the meeting, and we would love to speak with you. Our next item of business is communications to the Board, the superintendent's report. Dr. Looney?
Good evening, Board members, it's a pleasure to see you tonight, and I appreciate so many people in the audience and their attendance, and those that are watching live streaming. At this time, I'd like to call a good friend of mine and a representative from SCORE, the State Collaborative on Reforming Education, Dr. Sharon Roberts and Renee Copeland.
Good evening. We're happy to be here this evening. My name is Sharon Roberts, and I'm the chief operating officer for SCORE. SCORE is an independent nonprofit organization based in Nashville. Thank you for coming on up here to, I believe this is the well. Our team is here this evening, we're honored to be here to celebrate Williamson County Schools as a whole, Ravenwood High School, and Hillsbury Elementary, Hillsborough, excuse me, Elementary and Middle School, all of whom received honors during the 2014 SCORE Prize this year. I'll be spending some time talking about Ravenwood High School and about Williamson County as a whole. And our president and CEO, Jamie Woodson, is here to congratulate our middle school winner, Hillsborough. Since 2011, we have awarded the SCORE Prize to recognize those schools and districts in the state that are leaders in student learning. While we have many aims in recognizing these schools through the SCORE Prize, one important reason is that far too often, we don't lift up those schools and those leaders in the schools and our teachers and celebrate the outstanding work that they're doing in preparing Tennessee students for their future. We're proud to recognize those successful schools and districts, and we're really proud to be here with you all this evening. We have the most recognition ever for our SCORE Prize here tonight, so we're really happy about that. So, with that, we'll go ahead and talk about Ravenwood, and would love our Ravenwood teams to come up, and Jamie's going to join you also. And we would like to, I would like to share a little information about Ravenwood and what our team recognized when they went on their visit. Our site team was really impressed by multiple things when they went to Ravenwood High School. First, it was the individualized attention that the students receive. Through the school's unique freshman mentoring program and other activities, it's clear that the students are surrounded by caring adults. It's clear to see that teachers not only care about the students, but they also expect them to perform at their personal best. Ravenwood's culture of high expectations is clearly evident in the terms of the data, which shows high growth and high achievement. Another aspect of Ravenwood that our site visit team found to be exceptional was teacher collaboration. When we spoke to teachers at Ravenwood, it was clear that they were dedicated and passionate about the work that they do. The school also helps teachers find ways to meaningfully work together to advance student achievement through things called Power Mondays and other professional learning opportunities. Ravenwood is a school that has strong leaders. Dr. Vaden and her team clearly care about students and create an environment where student learning is the center of every decision. In addition to engaging students, our team was impressed by how engaged and active Ravenwood's parent community is as well. The work at Ravenwood is a powerful example of what it takes to make sure that our students are prepared for college and career. We're honored to be here with you this evening and to recognize the work that's going on at Ravenwood, and we also are looking forward to lifting up and highlighting that work through this year. Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to talk with you about Williamson County Schools, the district as a whole. Williamson County Schools is a finalist for the 2014 SCORE Prize in the district category. The district category for our annual SCORE Prize often features some of the most exceptional districts in the state, and this year is no different. Our site visit team was immediately impressed by Dr. Looney, the district leadership team, the Board of Education, and the staff that we met across the entire district. A common thread throughout our visit was that all individuals we met were passionate, dedicated, and exceptionally bright. In Williamson County Schools, we noticed that the district's vision and core values were at work in the three schools that we visited. Our site team was impressed by this, as well as the intentional efforts made by the district office to celebrate and support the over 40 schools in the district through weekly communications and personal shout-outs. Another thing that our site team noticed that was particularly remarkable was the deep commitment to continuous improvement throughout the district. Williamson County as a whole, you have a great reputation for strong schools and for exceptional work with your students. And so, it'd be easy to rest on your laurels and the good work that you have. But what we found was a clear example is that you don't do that. You continuously work to improve, and we could see that in the learning for students across the schools that we visited. The final thing that we want to mention about Williamson County is the strong leadership both at the teacher, school, and district level. Our site team saw numerous examples of teachers acting as leaders, they were actually teacher leaders and is very, very strong. They also met with exceptional school leaders who were keenly focused on instruction. And we heard time and time again how everyone in the community values the accessibility of the district office staff. To us, Williamson County sets two important examples. First, the district's long-held strong academic performance is something that all Tennessee school districts can strive for. And second, and probably most important, is that Williamson County, because you have high achievement, doesn't mean that you just settle for that. You continue to learn and grow. To use your
To use your words, you must continue to be relentless in your pursuit of excellence and growth in student learning, even if you are high performing. On behalf of SCORE, we're honored to present you with this banner to recognize your hard work and to improve student achievement. And again, we're looking forward to raising you up through the entire year and sharing your good work across our state. Congratulations. It is now my honor to turn this over to Jamie Woodson, our president and CEO.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Before I say a few brief remarks about how exceptional we know that Hillsborough School is and the work that every member of the community of the school has, I would like to just take a brief moment. My name is Jamie Woodson. I have the privilege of serving as the president and CEO of SCORE, the state collaborative on reforming education. In a previous life, for members of the school board, I also had the privilege of serving my community as an elected official. I know that this is very challenging work. It is very, very important work, and I want to thank you, and our organization wants to thank the leaders in this room who have offered yourselves in public service in a very important and unique way, because in my view, there is no more important work than supporting students in their quest to be prepared for success beyond high school. And I will have to say, you're doing a phenomenal job of it. This district, the leadership, the teachers, faculty, and community, and the children of this community are teaching the state and the country many things, about what excellence looks like, about what hard work and diligence applied well results in, and I just want to thank you for that. And so with that, I would love for the leaders of the Hillsborough School to please come up front with district leadership. Congratulations. And a huge congratulations to being a national Blue Ribbon School. Recognition for excellence continues even beyond what we're here to recognize you for tonight. Congratulations. Very quickly, I'd love to talk a little bit about what our team observed. Our team observed a variety of excellent behaviors. One, parent and community engagement at the Hillsborough School is exceptionally high. We saw firsthand, in very rigorous onsite observations, what great teaching looks like in the classroom, from the beginning of the period to the very end. What instead of traditional lecture used to look like, we saw facilitating learning and watching children take ownership in their own learning experience to really make sure that they were mastering knowledge and showing what they really know and what they're capable of. We saw so many examples of that. We also saw a tradition, just a tremendous focus on leadership, not only from your principal, Ms. Miller, but all the way to teacher leadership and student leadership. Our team observed that around every corner at the school. We were particularly impressed by your commitment to high expectations for all. Every student, regardless of the path that brought them to your school, you have very high expectations of them. And they have very high expectations of themselves because of the examples that you and the community is setting for them. We want to particularly thank Ms. Miller for her leadership, for creating a culture of excellence for teachers, for providing opportunities for professional learning, professional development, for recognition and ownership in the important work in your school. We want to thank the faculty and the teachers at Hillsborough School for watching learning bloom and encouraging your students and expecting greatness of them and supporting them along every step of the way. That is really tough work, and you're doing it beautifully, beautifully. We also saw very clearly that you're a cohesive team. You don't work as individual team members. You are a team that works together, dreams together, pours over data together to support your students, and does that in a way that really meets students where they are. When a child is accelerating in their work, you want to put your foot down on the pedal even more and encourage them even more. If a child is struggling and needs very individualized support and attention, you take time to do that, and it's showing in very clear results in your data, but more importantly, when we have the privilege of coming and learning from you. To Dr. Looney, I would be remiss if I didn't say, environments like this don't just happen. It takes leadership at every level, from the classroom level to the district level, and we deeply appreciate the leadership of you and your team. With that, it is my great privilege to just say thank you and congratulations. As Dr. Roberts mentioned, we at SCORE have the opportunity, and think it's very important, to recognize excellence and to share among educators and communities all across the state and country what best practice looks like in supporting students as we all desire for them to be successful beyond high school and pursue individual and economic freedom and economic independence. And so we thank you for the work that you're doing with that. It's a little bit of a different presentation for this one than the other two. And again, I want to say, we have never, it's been several years that we've been giving the SCORE Prize and honoring schools. As many of you know, there are 1,700 schools across the state of Tennessee, 142 school districts. To have this kind of excellence at each level is remarkable, and another reason why this community, its leadership, and the parents throughout should be proud. But I'm also very proud to present to you a check for $10,000 to invest in supporting the students in your school and in your community as you work really diligently to support them in their path for success. So thank you.
I think so, too. That was exciting.
I would like to comment that we did have three schools that went to Washington, or three, represented us from three schools to go to Washington, D.C. and receive their Blue Ribbon School Award. We've recognized them before, but I had the opportunity to go with them, and it was an extraordinary event and experience, and I'm so proud of the schools for their exemplary work. I also want to just report to the board, we discussed at the work session, the severe shortage that we're having with substitute teachers. And once again, our amazing community has stepped forward to help serve. We had 146 prospective substitute teachers in training today signing up. We're not finished, but we're very, very excited about those individuals coming. So thank you so much. And then finally, board members, we have, as of the last count, I have received 35,033 students enrolled in the district as the latest report. And at this time, I'd like for Mrs. Carol Burson to please come forward and do some recognitions of individuals and employees.
We are going to continue the celebration. If you missed the Blue Ribbon presentation that Dr. Looney was speaking of honoring Kenrose, Trinity, and Hillsborough, check out the Week in Review that was released today. Got to put a plug in. It's fabulous. Plus, highlights of many, many, many of the Veterans Day programs that took place across all of our schools last week. Really some fabulous things going on there. So check out the Week in Review every week. It will make you happy. All right, we are going to start with athletics, and this is hot off the press, but congrats to Centennial High School and their large varsity division cheerleaders are state champions. Meet Caroline Manning, Ashton Smith, Hannah Brennan, Abby Wheeler, Ann Tinkoff, Brooklyn Biles, Ally Beard, Savannah Taylor, Lily Shelton, Gracie McLeod, Faith Parks, Mackenzie Simpson, Caroline Jones, Cassidy Parrish, Kaylee Hicks, Shelby Matthews, Maddie Lawrence, Kayla McLeod, Emma Kate Best, Lauren Robinson, and Lauren Wilkinson. They are coached by Chastity Carter. And also, this is Kaylee Hicks. Kaylee was named to the All-State Cheer Team over the weekend as well. Again, her coach is Chastity Carter. And Ellie Marquardt, we have honored Ellie already this year, but we are honoring her again because she was named the 2014-15 Tennessee Cheerleader of the Year over the weekend. Her coach is Stephanie Dykes. And here is your 2014 T-SAA AAA State Volleyball Champion Team from Brentwood High School. Katie Kemp, Jenny Roy, Ashley West, Kayla Massey, Anna Wilson, Liz Lill Schwartz, Cameron Carter, Keely Kaufman, Megan Jancy, Georgia Cotton, Finley Black, Kayla Rulick, Olivia Rawls, Garrett Joyner, and Kelly Mathis. Their coach is Barbara Campbell. We don't get to honor middle schools very often, but please meet Davis from Woodland Middle School. He actually won first place in the Tennessee Middle School State Cross Country Meet. His coach is Mike Winstead. Let's talk about the arts now, and this is the Page High Marching Band. They won the Contest of Champions 2014 Tennessee Division II State Marching Band Competition. Their band director is Matt Emerson. This is Rachel Sharp. If you all came to our Info-Fon at the Galleria, you saw Rachel perform there. Well, this is Rachel. And she was named to the 2014 National Honor Choir. Her choral director is Cynthia Furman. We have three students who were named to the All-National Honor Orchestra. This is Mackenzie Fetters from Brentwood High School. She plays the violin. Her director is Andrew O'Keefe. Also from Brentwood High School, John Kang. He also plays the violin. And again, Andrew O'Keefe is his director. And one other student named to the All-National Honor Orchestra, Dustin Lynn. At Ravenwood High School, Mark Kinzer is his director. And academics, this is Chandler Flint from Ravenwood High School, and he represented Tennessee at Boys Nation. Now, let's talk about some staff members. This is Barbara Campbell. You know, just won yet another state championship. Well, this time, she was named the 2014 T-SAA Female Coach of the Year in District Six. And also at Brentwood High School, this is Dennis King. He coaches boys basketball, and he was named the 2014 T-SAA District Six Male Coach of the Year. I like this one a lot. Independence High School School Sportsmanship of the Year, T-SAA District Six. And our own Dr. Looney, T-SAA District Six School Administrator of the Year. Yay. Last but not least, and this is really cool, too, the 2014 Workforce Essentials Incorporated Employer of the Year, Williamson County Schools. And here's Jackie Bag and Rebecca Owens accepting that award. Congratulations to all of our students, our school, and our staff members.
Mr. Chair, that completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. First, I'd like to recognize the Career Fair that we held as a district last week on Wednesday at the Agricultural Center. Dr. Allen is doing just amazing work in the CTE program, Career and Technical Education. And I just wanted to say how wonderful it was, and if you never had the chance to go, I highly recommend, if you own a business, I very highly recommend you go and set up a booth so that our eighth graders have a chance to experience what careers are out there and what's available to them. And so wanted to recognize that as well. If there's any principals or teachers in the audience, I'd ask you to please stand that we may recognize you and thank you for being in attendance. Thank you very much. It means so much to us that you come, so thank you. Also, I'd like to thank our deputies for being here tonight. It's always a pleasure to have you here, and we feel much safer because you're here, so thank you. Lastly, I'd like to do a shameless request to this audience and to our community as a whole in regards to the Ladders of Hope, Ladders to Hope. It's a program that we, well, Dr. Looney, under your leadership, started last year, and I'd just like to read a little bit to you. Last year, an impressive group of students with outstanding support from the community began the Ladders to Hope Initiative and were able to help students earn $1,120,000 in Hope scholarships. With the support and tutoring made possible through Ladders to Hope, 70 students had the means for pursuing college that would not have been available otherwise. Our gracious community contributed over $250,000 in a short amount of time last year to make Ladders to Hope possible. This year, we need $100,000 to continue giving hope to this next class of students. And again, we need your support. You can donate two ways, so please write this down. You can go to Williamson County Schools website and follow the links to invest now. It's very easy to do. Or you could send a check to the Williamson County Education Foundation at 604 West Main Street, Franklin, Tennessee, 37064. I'd like you to know that 100% of your donations will go towards making this program work, and they are tax deductible. Thank you very much. That concludes my report. We will now move on to new business. We will begin with Board Policy Revisions editorial 5.306, Military Leave. Dr. Looney?
Mr. Chair and board members, I do recommend approval. This is an editorial change. It only requires one reading.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. And I believe that is, board members, I'm sorry, page 91, board members. Do I have a motion from the floor? Mr. Wimberly, move to approve.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hullett. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a vote.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion is approved. Moving on, we'll move to Item B, Request for Quick Claim Deeds. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And board members, on page 93, you have the information from the board's attorney. We're letting to a small parcel of property, 1.13 acres. I do recommend the approval of this quick claim deed.
Do I have a motion from the floor? Ms. Emerson, move to approve. Second from Mr. Peterson. Is there any discussion? Yes. Mr. Gregory?
Yes, I'd ask Mr. Squires to please elaborate on this transaction. I find it of great interest.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. As I expressed to you all at the work session, this is a bit of a piece of property that got lost in time. This was a piece of property that back in around, if I recall what I looked at, judgment from 1897 passed the property. It had a one-room schoolhouse on it, a really small piece of property, passed it into the hands of what were then called school directors, which are the equivalent today of school board members. Unfortunately, that particular order said, and their successors in office. Now, realistically, what's happened is that it got lost over the years as the school board changed and history changed the nature of the school board. At one point in time, for instance, in the county, we had five independent special school districts rather than the school district you all are sitting on the board of today. As those changes took place, that particular piece of property got lost. Nobody was really even aware that there might be any kind of interest in that property held by this board. The two, one of the residents of the two parcels that our, the school board, our school building sat on is trying to sell our property, and there's a bit of a holdup while this gets resolved. So that's what you all are doing today, essentially saying, "We have no real interest in this property, and if you need us to say that, we can do so, and that will allow Ms. Tyler, the resident trying to sell our property, to do that."
Thank you, Mr. Squires. Is there any further discussion? Board members, that is located on page 93, just for information. There's no further discussion, we will move to a vote. There's no further discussion, we will move to a vote.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion is approved. The next item of business is the 2014-2015 Intrac category Transfer Bethesda Project. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. This is in order for us to put up a safety guardrail at Bethesda Elementary School. As you may recall, there was a chipper truck that ran off into the playground. The school is actually situated below an elevation from the road, the Egress Road on the back, and so we want to run a guardrail to protect the school and any potential individuals playing on the playground. This would allow us to do so.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. That is located on page 97 of your handbook. Is there any discussion? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion from the floor? Mr. Hullett, move to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Cash. Is there any discussion? Mr. Cash?
Yes, I'd just like to thank Dr. Looney for his rapid response to this issue. Thank goodness that there was no children playing that day, but this has been on the minds of a lot of folks in District Two, and we'd just like to thank you.
And I weigh the comment. We're going to get started on this immediately after your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Okay. Where is that located? Okay, the next item of business is the, page 97, the Extended School Program. Oh, I see it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board Members. I recommend approval of the transfer of funds from Extended School Program Fund. This is to allow for additional workers to transfer to full-time. As you know, this is a self-supporting fund. Those taxpayer dollars are involved. Do recommend your approval.
Is there a motion from the floor? Ms. Dr. Burgos? Second by Ms. Curly. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, move to a vote.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. We will now move on to the next item of business, which is the 2015-2016 School Calendar. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board Members. You've had some lengthy discussion about this matter. Recommend approval of the calendar as submitted by the Calendar Committee.
Board Members, that is located on page 103. Do we have a motion from the floor? Motion to approve by Mr. Hullett. Second by Mr. Peterson. Is there any discussion? Okay. Ms. Emerson?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make an amendment to propose that the school calendar change the wording from semester break to Christmas and New Year holiday.
Okay, we have a motion for an amendment. Do I have a second? Second by Dr. Burgos? Okay. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Looks like Ms. Curly.
Yes, actually, I was going to speak to just days in general on the calendar. So as we're talking about the break in and of itself, we can address that and then discuss days.
Yeah, we can speak of that. Let's, we'll stick to the amendment on the floor. Looks like Mr. Wimberly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate the passion surrounding this issue, but I'm going to respectfully submit that the calendar is not the appropriate place to make a statement of any type and recommend that we pass the calendar as it was proposed. And, Dr. Looney, I'm going to make a suggestion that perhaps next year, when the Calendar Committee considers the calendar, perhaps consider eliminating the third column and just give us dates. Perhaps it will help this, avoid this perennial discussion so that we can go about our business. We just need dates, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wimberly. Next speaker is Mr. Peterson.
I think you all know where I stand on this. It's disappointing to me that we're choosing to put, however you feel, personal and political agendas above the students of our county. Bottom line is if anyone here can talk to me about how this affects our children in any form or fashion, then I'll be happy to listen intently. But up to this point, I haven't heard a single person speak specifically about the children of Williamson County. They've spoken about their personal ideals and why they believe that it's important that we have this on the calendar. The bottom line is, as I said before, this calendar speaks specifically to when we come to school and when we don't. Most of the children inside Williamson County probably don't even look at this calendar. Their parents do. And their parents, some of which don't have kids in our school system, are ultimately making a decision on whether or not what it says. Now, I'm asking us to move past this and vote on the calendar that was submitted by the teachers who ultimately we represent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Our next speaker is Mr. Hullett.
Thank you, sir. One month ago, one month ago, we signed this document, Code of Ethics. Article 1, Section 1, we went around and we read it. Article 1, Section 1, "I will at all times think in terms of students first, always determining other important things according to how they affect education and development of students." Article 2, Section 2, "I will represent at all times the entire school community and refuse to represent special interests or partisan politics," on the back page, which actually has our signatures affixed to it. Article 6, Section 2, "I will avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest," which I personally believe this is a huge conflict of interest because we are a public school system. I've had conversations with all of you before. I'm a Christian. We go to Brentwood Baptist Church. I teach my boys at home. They get the values instilled with them, in them, at church and at home, and they model great behavior at school. But public schools are no place for religion to be taught or exercised upon other folks. And then Section 3 says, "I will refrain from using my position on the board for personal or partisan gain." Obviously, since we don't have a unanimous one-county religion, this is partisan. That's four items on this document that one month ago, maybe less than a month ago, that we all signed and went around and accepted as our code of ethics. This is important, and just what Ken said and also what Rick said, this in no way, if anybody can tell me how this benefits the children of our schools, the 35,000, all 35,000 children in our schools, I'm willing to listen as well. But so far, we hear nothing. It's exclusionary rather than being inclusive of all students, and that's what we're here to serve, all students.
Thank you, Mr. Hullett. Our next speaker is Ms. Curly.
Thank you. Yes, I wanted to just address everyone here. There seems to be an assumption that we're placing our religious beliefs upon everyone and every student, and that cannot be farther from the truth. Actually, when you look at federal holidays, which are recognized, as well as holidays in the state of Tennessee, these are published Tennessee State Holidays. They still call out Christmas Day along with Columbus Day, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, a number of holidays. So if it is naming a break, name a break, maybe what you will, but let's at least acknowledge the state holidays and the federal holidays, which are widely recognized across this country and in the state of Tennessee. These are state-recognized, published holidays. I don't see any harm in calling out Christmas Day as it does appear on both the federal calendars and on the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Curly. Dr. Burgos?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members. Thanks for the opportunity to share my thoughts. I went ahead and wrote some down because I can get a little nervous, and I wanted to be very clear on my position with this. I am in favor of putting Christmas holiday back on the school board, excuse me, the school calendar, like it was since Christmas was declared a U.S. federal holiday in the late 1800s. My reason is the same as Ms. Curly's, is that it's a federal holiday. It has nothing to do with religion. It was removed in the recent past when our nation was swept by a wave of political correctness. A full-out war on Christmas, you will remember, was raging when a prior Williamson County school board decided to remove the word "Christmas" and substitute "Winter Break" in order to avoid a potential lawsuit. That's why it happened. I do not fault them. I was not on the board at the time. They must have felt the threat to the district was real. Thankfully, the Supreme Court has since ruled that calling Christmas "Christmas" is not unconstitutional, and many states across the Union, including Tennessee, have written laws protecting free speech as it relates to the Christmas holiday. Putting the title "Christmas Holiday" back into the school calendar is not about forcing anyone to practice a religion or excluding people of varying faiths. It's about preserving our American heritage and culture. The purpose of declaring a federal holiday as a nation is to make sure that we don't forget important events in our history and to stop and celebrate them together. The federal government's calendar has 10 days out of the year listed as holidays when people don't go to work, and two of them are Christmas and New Year's Day. The reason the schools are closed from December 21st to January 1st is to celebrate these two federal holidays, not just to take a break from school. It's not even Thanksgiving holiday yet, and the signs of upcoming Christmas holiday are everywhere. It's an American tradition, and with many secular symbols such as Santa and trees, and it's not an attempt to establish a national religion. I respect my Jewish, Muslim, Hindu, and even my atheist friends, and I encourage them to worship or not worship as they see fit. I agree that we should stop fighting about what is politically correct or incorrect and making decisions out of fear for frivolous litigation, and do what is good and right, and put Christmas back on the school calendar in recognition of the federal holiday that it is.
Thank you, Dr. Burgos. Our next speaker, Ms. Emerson.
Thank you. I likewise want to say, and thank you very much for what both you, Dr. Burgos and Ms. Curly, you said, because I agree with you, and those are primarily the reasons that I come at this. The concern that I hear, and I think the reason this is such a heated topic, is because a lot of people bring a lot of their own bias to this particular word. And my wanting this, as my constituents and other people, is that it's a federal holiday. It's acknowledged as a federal holiday. It's on federal calendars. The banks are closed. Businesses recognize it as a federal holiday, and I think it's important that it go back on the calendar as a federal holiday. The concern that it's tied with a lot of other things are not being promoted by me or anybody else. We want to follow what our American heritage has given us, the Constitution, all of our federal documents. This is a federal law. Things, businesses are closed on Christmas Day. It's a federal law. And our Tennessee State Legislature moved into law in July of this year, a law saying that we can, in fact, put it back on the calendar without any concern about a lawsuit or anything else, that that is what we have the ability to do if we so choose. So it is a choice, and I respect everybody's opinion. It's not designed for you to feel left out or to be moved aside. If you do, I'm so very sorry. But this is not my making. This is something that we have had in this country for years and years and years, and it's just asking that you respect, you respect the laws of this land. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emerson. Mr. Peterson?
Aye, 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 aye. We still haven't said anything about the children. When are you going to start talking about the children? I'm sorry, I'm fed up. I'm fed up with it. I want you to start talking about the children. Now, if you look on the calendar, can you please scroll down the calendar a little bit on the screen so that way the date, all right? If you look at the calendar, it says Monday through Fri-, all right? Monday through Friday, December 21st through January 1st, December 21st through January 1st, no school, semester break. Nowhere on there does it say December 25th. At the bottom of this piece of paper that half the people throw in their trash when they get anyways, it specifically says the 24th, December 24th, 24th, Christmas Day. So all this discussion, it's right there. It says it. That's what you wanted. It has no bearing for us to put "Christmas Break." You are excluding our children, and I will not stand for it. You are excluding our children, all. The 35,000 students that are in this county, they deserve to ultimately be included, not excluded. I'm asking you, I want to call the vote, if I could, please.
There's no reason to continue to talk about it.
Are you calling to question, Mr. Peterson?
Yes, please.
Is there a second?
Can we vote on the amendment?
No.
On the called question requires a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Hullett, second. We'll do a show of hands for a call to question. All those in favor of bringing the discussion to an end and call to a vote on the amendment, raise your hand. Motion fails. We'll move on with discussion.
Just if you would, just for clarity purposes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Cash, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Gregory, Ms. Curly, Dr. Burgos, Ms. Emerson, opposed. Jay, and Mr. Galbraith. And then just for the record, those who are in favor of called question, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Hullett, and Mr. Wimberly. Okay. Called question failed. We will move on with discussion. Our next speaker is Mr. Hullett.
Thank you again.
There we go. Thank you.
Well, to make sure that we didn't get into discussions of, "I got a phone call this," or "I've talked to somebody that," I actually counted the emails since Thursday. There were 14 emails that were in some form or fashion saying, "Please support this," what would eventually become an amendment, and there were 124 emails against. One of the things about the emails that were for the amendment, they were very brief, and it was, some of them were, well, they were just short and just said, "Not Winter Break, Christmas," and different things, and you were all on it. And then the others that were 124 of them were well-thought-out lengthy emails. I was actually going to say exactly what Ken said. If you look down at the bottom of the document, Christmas Day is on there. The break that we're talking about is the 21st through the 1st. Now, I'm a Christian, and I would not sell out Christ and Christmas for Santa just so we can get it on the calendar. The people who are for it, and then all the emails that got forwarded, and we weren't supposed to see it, but then somebody forwarded, and then it came to us, it was all about, "We got to get Christ back in the schools. Let's get Christ back in there, Christ." It all came out. I mean, the emails are there. You can look at it. That is the purpose for doing this. It is the Christian agenda, and it doesn't, and I am a strong Christian, strong Christian, but it has no place in a public school setting. 124 emails and 14 emails, and the rally cries went out, and that's what came in. 124 emails and 14 emails, and the rally cries went out, and that's what came in. It's on the calendar, like Ken said at the bottom, Christmas Day. It doesn't even say December 25th. It could have been December 25th, comma, Christmas Day, but it just says Christmas Day. It's off. It's on the calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Hullett. Next speaker, Mr. Wimberly.
I just wanted to point out that it's not only on the calendar, but it is board policy that Christmas Day is a school holiday. It's in policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wimberly. Mr. Cash?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I agree with Ms. Burgos on her reasoning for putting this on the calendar, but I'd like to take it a step farther. I truly believe in diversity, folks. I really do. I'd like to see this calendar have every faith on it. So that as far as a diversity tool for the children, this is a simple worksheet that's going to be sitting in your home, on your refrigerator, or on the side of your cabinet. Have you ever had a little fellow say, Papa, or Mom, or Dad, "What is, what's that, Hannah, whatever?" Or, "What's this?" Or, "What's this?" Or, "What's that veteran thing?" This is a simple tool that can be sitting right in front of your children, all 35,000 of them, instead of throwing them in the trash. A learning tool. Folks, diversity equals peace. If our children don't learn at a very young age that it's okay to live across the street from a Catholic, or a Baptist, or a Hindu, or a Jewish person, or a Muslim, and that there's absolutely nothing wrong with that, because that's our freedom in this great nation. So why does this have to be on the calendar? There's no room for Christianity in the public schools? These statements turn my stomach. This is diversity. That's what I'd like to see on this calendar. I would like to see everyone's faith equally on this calendar.
Please. Please, our audience, we do not, we would prefer that you remain silent and decorum.
There is an amendment to put this on the calendar already, sir.
You're in the face, Dan.
Pardon me?
I would like to remind the audience that you are guests here, and that it is not time for you to speak to the board. If you would like to, please refrain from any public comment this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. Mr. Galbraith?
Yeah, I just want to, I do want to thank the Calendar Committee and Dr. Looney. I think what they've tried to do here, I believe, is a compromise, knowing the issues that were out there. If I remember the conversations correctly, Mr. Gregory and Dr. Looney had conversations a couple of months ago, back when, before the Calendar Committee or during their discussions. And the result was the placement of the board policy, 5.310, at the bottom. Does it do everything that I would like it to do? No. I think it, I think it's a little, I personally find it frustrating, and I will call it political correctness, and I'll just kind of speak to that here. In TCA, Section 496, 3016, Special Days and Holidays, our Tennessee law actually says that Thanksgiving Day and December 25th are set apart as holidays for all the public schools. So somebody, at some point, thought that the word "Christmas" as a federal holiday was so offensive that they would take it out of the code and just put December 25th. Now, I will, I've tried to, I've tried to talk to people on both sides of this issue and challenge them. So I hear you guys saying, "What good does this do? How does it further the education of our kids to change it from, you know, to put Christmas Break instead of Semester Break or Winter Break?" I guess I would have the, I would have the same, the exact same, I would have had the exact same argument when we were going to change it from Christmas Break to Winter Break back in the day. I don't, I don't think that that necessarily, it's just a piece of paper. It didn't do anything to affect our kids in the classroom. I understand the exclusiveness and inclusiveness, and I'm actually, I'm just kind of sharing with you my thought process, but I don't, I don't need, I don't need it to say Christmas Break. I don't really, I don't really care. I don't think it, it doesn't, it doesn't make me believe what I believe. I don't think it, but in doing so, I don't think it forces people to believe. I'm just, I'm kind of smack dab in the middle of this, but I can completely see both sides. I think that the current policy takes a step in the right direction. Now, I would, I would rather, to Ms. Gurley's point, I would rather see, like, I don't want us to go over and above to say we're going to call it December 25th like the, like the state, the state law does. I don't think that's necessary. I don't find the words "Christmas" as terribly offensive, but I'm not in favor of this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Galbraith. Dr. Burgos?
I just wanted to briefly answer Mr. Peterson's question about how it could affect the children, because it obviously bothers him, and I respect Mr. Peterson's opinion, because I know he loves children, as I do. I believe that the children in this county should have the right to learn about the heritage of their country, and I think this helps to do that. If the word "Christmas" is treated like it's taboo, you know, or like there's something wrong with it, I do think that sends a message to children. And I think the reason that the emails that we got in support were short and sweet is because it wasn't a forum email. It wasn't through any particular website. It was just people reaching out to us, saying, "Look, I feel strongly about this. One of the reasons I voted for you is because we have shared values, that, you know, you love our country," and I just wanted to speak to that. I do believe that it helps the children. I would never do anything that I thought harmed the children, and I certainly do not want to exclude anyone. I just wanted to say that to you.
Thank you, Dr. Burgos. Ms. Emerson?
In all due respect, Mr. Peterson, if you ask almost any number of children in any public school what their favorite holiday is, you are by and large going to have them tell you that it's Christmas. And without Christmas on the calendar, we would be in school. There would be no reason for us to call school off. If we don't honor it as a federal holiday, then why would we want to honor it any other way if we don't have it on the calendar? And we have been relentless in our pursuit of education, and as a teacher, I think it's important that there's balance there. And I am, I respect your passion, I do, but I also feel that it's a very important part. Christmas, as the kids are talking about Christmas, they're looking for Christmas ideas. Every store you walk into has Christmas everywhere, and has since before Halloween. It is a huge business. It, I mean, and if you look at it as a business, why would you object to it being on the calendar? It's a, it has lots of other things that are attached to it, yes, but some of those are very personal feelings that you and other people want to attach to that, and I can appreciate that. But we do honor Christmas as an incredible buying opportunity, as a gift-giving event. I mean, and the kids will tell you that if there's a favorite holiday, most children, especially little people, are going to tell you their favorite holiday is Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Emerson. Ms. Gurley?
Thank you. Just looking at the calendar, as a parent and someone who keeps a calendar on my fridge, like a lot of parents, I like to go down and see those dates and quickly kind of check. One of the issues with this particular calendar, I think, is this is probably a first pass. I don't know how many times it was looked at in committee with teachers, but just from a layout perspective and flow, to have to bounce back and forth, we see a lot of professional development days and different types of professional development days. There might be some opportunities to simplify and incorporate in those Tennessee holidays, those holidays that are recognized by our state, and do it in such a way that, you know, we are marking some of those national holidays. Most of those are also federally recognized holidays, if not all of them here in Tennessee. I think Tennessee has a few more, but hopefully we can come to some point where, look, these are state-recognized holidays. Let's simplify the calendar so it's easy for parents to use. They know when school is in. They know when it's not in. They know when the kids need to go back. They know when it's key testing dates, and they know when there are state and federally recognized holidays. And Christmas happens to be one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gurley. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Chairman. Williamson County is the epicenter of attention when it comes to education issues in Tennessee. I think everyone knows that and has seen that. I was on that board many years ago that made that move from having it listed as Christmas Break to having it what it's listed to today. The Vanderbilt First Amendment Center came to this board and came to all the boards in the state of Tennessee, letting all of us know what it was that we were doing when we left it as a specific religious holiday or connotation of religious holiday. At the time, rather than deal with potential issues and make Williamson County schools a battleground, the board was proactive so as not to become a distraction to the students' learning. The board during this time decided to make that move so we did not distract from the educational opportunities for our kids. During that time, from the last, as you know, I've been on the board 24 years, that during this time, that we have gone from a good to great to a world-class district. Leaving it as it is now is not a distraction. Making a change is a distraction and will cause controversy throughout the community. Our ultimate goal is to provide students with the best learning environment possible. The board back then made a decision that has lasted without controversy until now. I think the path that the board established back then was solid. The reasoning for making that change was solid, and I think now that we have this before us, that I hope that we will continue that course of action and stay with the solid decisions that were made back then to avoid controversy, keep it out of the classroom, and let our students continue to learn as they have, and continue our trek towards being a world-class school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Peterson?
I just want to make two more points. Basically, I appreciate the individuals that were part of the committee, the teachers that took the time to put this calendar together. I support the calendar as is. I don't, again, I don't quite understand where, I'm sorry, Ms. Emerson, I'm not sure a lot of what you were talking about with regards to the Christmas, because it's, the calendar is based on exactly what it says. It's a break. It's a school break. So again, I appreciate the teachers and that did it, put this together. It's worked for the last two years, for as long as I've been a parent in Williamson County, a parent in Williamson County. I don't understand why we have to have this argument, but I would appreciate the opportunity to move forward, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Ms. Emerson?
I just want to go on record for letting you know, Mr. Peterson, that I still have children in the Williamson County system, and Christmas is a big deal. And I can attest to the fact that this particular child of mine and his and her friends are very excited about Christmas. After Thanksgiving, it's really hard for a lot of teachers to, especially with little people, kindergarten, first, second, the smaller kids, they get very excited about this time of year, and they are very distracted. And it's not because of a calendar that's hanging on a refrigerator. It's because of all the commercials. It's all the Christmas music. It's all the Santa clauses that blown up in everybody's yard. It's all kinds of things that have nothing to do with the Christian religion. It has everything to do with the commercial part of this. And that's why they get so hyped up by everywhere they go. There's Christmas here, there's blowups in yards. So again, I would say to you, this is an opportunity for us just to go back and, or not go back, go forward. I'm not for going back. And something that Mr. Anderson said, I'm not for status quo either. I think it's important, you have new board members on this board, and I think it's very important for you to understand that just because on certain issues, we don't seem to seem, or feel the same way that you do, we are every bit as passionate and consumed with this job, consumed with this job that we do day and night. I have been a teacher in this county for over 25 years, so, I mean, don't tell me that I don't care about the kids of Williamson County and the hours and days and months and summers I have spent dedicating myself to my craft, not because I was asked to, and I certainly wasn't paid for it, but because it's important to me to be the very best I can be in representing Williamson County and what we want for our kids. So please, don't take that argument with me again. I just think that it's important that we look at this, and I agree with you, it's time to move on. But this is an important issue, and by trying to sweep it under the rug and pretend that some of the members on this board should not have a differing opinion is not the best way to proceed forward as a united board, which I think we can be. We have been on certain issues, and I think we will be again.
Thank you, Ms. Emerson. Mr. Hullett?
I'm not saying that we have to be a united board in everything that you had said. And one of the things that you said right up until that part, when you went through, the kids are excited and it's all this, and it's, and one of the point, one of the things you said right in the middle of that, you said, "It's not this calendar." Then why does it have to be on it? It's not this calendar, then why would we make a change on it? I was a teacher in the district. I'm a parent. I'm a board member. I'm married to a teacher in the district. And even when I was a teacher and when I was a parent in the district, I never once looked at this and thought, "Controversy. There's going to have to be something in there." I never looked at it, and I was never bothered by the fact that Christmas wasn't on it, that it was called Winter Break or Semester Break. And when you had mentioned earlier that if we didn't have Christmas, we would have no reason to take a break, of course we would. It's Semester Break. We take a break between the semesters. There's grading periods and those type of things. Of course we would have a break. And I know that Dr. Burgos didn't imply this or didn't mean this when she said this, but what was insinuated was that because if I don't support the amendment to change it to Christmas Break, then I don't believe in our American culture and values and all the things that you're going through and that I'm not, in essence, an American, a true American. I know that's not what you were saying, but that's the way it came off, because I was disagreeing with that. I will tell you this, we have been advised by our legal counsel against this. We know this. And when they sue, and they will sue if this amendment were to pass, and when they pick it, and yes, they will pick it, my kids, like I said on Thursday, my kids, my kids' teachers, my wife as a teacher would have to walk through those picket lines just to get to their school. And when all this, and all we talked about Thursday, at one point, we want to give our teachers a raise, we want to do all these things, and we need resources, and we are so strapped from a financial resources standpoint, and now we're willing to risk it? Not saying that it's going to happen, that it could, you know, that we're going to just lose all this money automatically, but we're putting it at risk. Why would we put that at risk? Because when it happens, and they do, and they will sue, and when they pick it and all of those things happen, and we lose hundreds of thousands, possibly more, of dollars that gets taken away from our kids, that is your answer. That is the answer to Mr. Peterson's question. That's where it does not benefit the kids of this county. The 35,000 kids will miss out on the resources that were diverted away from them just for a name on a calendar. And what will happen is, at the end of all that, when it gets done and the lawsuits are finished, it'll get changed back to Winter Break, and it'll be right back to where it was. And we'll just be, we'll say, "Well, we gave it a shot." I can't support this because it does not serve the purpose of benefiting all 35,000 kids we have in this district.
Thank you, Mr. Hullett. Dr. Bartholomew?
It concerns me considerably that we move to some kind of intimidation or threatening to be able to make a decision. I take a rather strong opinion in opposition to that. We have the-- We have the ability, we have the minds to make the decision. We've read hundreds of emails and telephone calls, and we've listened to the people. My sense is, there are several things. I thought tonight of bringing a major thesis to this forum in light of what I thought may occur, at least is happening somewhat. Instead of that, I just jotted down a couple of things that I would like to have us pay attention to. One is, and if I may be very unpolitically correct, that there seems to be still a little bit of the carryover from the election period of time of the six new members in opposition with the remainder. It's not an accusation, but there seems to be a bit of that tenure. The other is, there is, there seems to be a supplanting of political correctness for good common sense. I think as a board, we have common sense, and we don't have to get too disturbed, too frustrated, too upset. We're discussing something that ultimately, it will be decided, it will go on, and there is in no way that we are attempting to threaten, to hurt, or to affect negatively 35,000 students. The term coming up, when we mention it, it's almost so, we're hard to say the word "Christmas." It's almost like it should be anathema. It's been around a long time, longer than America has been, but in 1870, there was some decisions made, and since that period of time, Christmas has been celebrated in various means and in ways which develops tradition. The central theme around Christmas, regardless of what your religious convictions may be, and I've had, I have friends of all persuasions, but the central theme is giving. And if we can teach or instruct or allow our students to understand in the explanations of Christmas, giving is vital, it's essential. Giving is a blessing, no matter where you come from, no matter what your background is. So, I think that is something that is important to carry on with our children, with our students. The other is tradition. Our families, certainly speaking for myself, I think for the most of you here, tradition in the family is important. We carry it on from grandpas to grandmas to moms and dads to older children. I remember when, and we did this, we did that, whatever it may be. Tradition is an extremely important element of a child's education. So, I don't think that is negative or hurtful at all. The other is around Christmas time, we have, and you've heard it multiple times, Christmas around the world, in which there are traditions that are celebrated in multiple, multiple countries, backgrounds, racial, ethnicity, whatever. It's there. And they are able to see the costumes, the way people celebrate. It tells us something about how other people act, where they're coming from, what they think, how they dress, their apparel, their giving, what their celebrations happen to be. So, I see no problem with that. And I'd like to see us begin to bury the hatchet, not in each other, but in making a sound, common sense decision. We are not out to hurt the children. Christine and I, just by the by, raised five of them and put them through school. There were those who had differing opinions when they were growing up, and it gave us a chance to talk about those differing opinions without being terribly upset, not intimidating, not threatening, not hurting their growth or their nature or their psyche. I think we're capable, well capable, of doing that. So, all I say is, for all of us, not to be fearful of the word "Christmas," and that no matter where you come from, there are traditions, the idea of giving, the idea of being thoughtful to one another, I think is incredibly important. It is something that could be carried on with the name "Christian." I don't think it's anathema. It's still going to be with us for a while.
Thank you, Dr. Bartholomew. Ms. Emerson? You requested to speak, or no?
I don't.
You don't? Okay, that's okay. Mr. Wimberly?
Actually, I was going to make a motion to call the vote, but it may not be necessary. We may have all spoken.
Okay. All right. Well, there's no further discussion? Okay. No further discussion, we will move to a vote on the amendment. Mr. King, can we do it? Okay. So, the amendment on the floor is to change semester break to Christmas and New Year break. I believe that's correct.
New Year holiday.
Holiday, Christmas and New Year holiday. So, semester break will be replaced with Christmas and New Year holiday. Everybody understand what they're voting on? So, a yes vote would be in favor of changing that language. Okay. We're ready to vote?
Your vote is six yes, six no.
Motion fails on approval. Fails on vote. The amendment fails. The amendment has failed. We will move on again with discussion on the calendar as it is presented. Is there anybody who would like to speak to that? Ms. Curley?
Yes, just going back to some of my previous comments, when you look at the calendar, again, the way it's laid out, it is a little bit clunky because we are shifting around, and there's dates at the bottom in smaller font. What I would like to see are those holidays, which are recognized by the state of Tennessee and our federal government, clearly indicated on the calendar. And incorporated in with the dates. So, just in order from top to bottom, not broken up. So, any of those federal and state holidays to be indicated within the calendar.
Just for clarity, is that an amendment that you're proposing?
Yes, an amendment. So, would that be an amendment if we're going to maybe reorganize the calendar?
You can make a motion to amend.
Yes, I make a motion to amend.
Do that. I do want to, for clarity purposes, make sure I understand which dates you're talking about. Are you asking us to, if this passes, to go back and find the state holidays and the federal holidays and incorporate each one, or the holidays that are also on the, also in the board policy?
So, those holidays, which are both state and federally recognized, include New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Columbus Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day.
And if I understand your amendment, you would like to have that listed, because I believe some of them are listed down below in the accordance with the board policy, but you would prefer they are listed above? Is that how I understand?
Right. And those within, those that are also in board policy, could those not, you know, also be included in there if they're lumped in with some of the breaks? I mean, it's just, it's more of a formatting issue, if anything, and it also recognizes those holidays, which are recognized by the state of Tennessee and the federal government.
For clarity purposes, for, I think your formatting description is clear. You want to insert of those particular dates at each line where that date falls?
Yes.
For the holidays, you listed, you listed a number of holidays. You added, you included Columbus Day, which is a federal holiday, but it's not currently on the calendar. You did not mention Washington's birthday, which is a federal holiday and is not included.
Yes, let's include that one also.
Okay.
Yes, sorry, missed that one.
And just for my clarity sake, those holidays, we will still have students in school during those particular holidays?
There are some where students are in school, and there are some where students are not in school.
Okay, so you'd like for us to mimic what's here as far as students in school and not in school?
Yes.
A second, please.
Okay. We have a second by Mr. Gregory to the amendment by Ms. Curley.
Do we need to have some format change? Or I probably need to just ask the board?
Can I?
Yeah. Dr. Looney?
As Mrs. Curley is considering the scope of her amendment, I'm just trying to be clear, the, if you look at page 105 of your packet, which is the proposed calendar, we would, in order to try to make room for your request, we would remove the language that is a resuscitation of, a recitation of the policy, that paragraph, that would be removed. We would try to add columns to make way for federal and/or state holidays where students are actually in school, but you want it denoted within the calendar.
As listed by you.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. So, if I may, just so the board's clear on the motion, for example, where we have Labor Day system closed, any other system closed days would reflect that style there at the September 7th entry. Where we have Constitution Day, students in school, any holiday you've listed where students are in school would reflect that style?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Hey, we have an amendment on the floor with a second. Is there any discussion to the amendment? Ms. Emerson?
Thank you very much. I think that might be a good alternative. As far as space, we're only talking about adding a few more, so if the bottom part of it comes out, some of these are already on there. Martin Luther King Day is already on there, Thanksgiving, some of those others are already listed, so it's not really requiring a huge amount of space. It's only admitting a few more, a few more lines. So, I don't think there'd be a problem at all formatting that.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Emerson. Mr. Hullett?
I just have a quick question, because I don't have a problem with any of the federally or state mandated holidays in any respect. Do you foresee, I know it's a crystal ball-type question, but do you foresee any confusion in this? Because that was the reason I originally pushed it, was on a day, we have Constitution Day, you know, but that is, as it's mandated, but on the other holidays, this is basically a calendar of when we're in and out of school, and to have the other holidays on there, do you see any potential confusion where we have a holiday listed and then a student doesn't show up, or a parent doesn't bring their student to school because, "Oh, it was on the calendar."
Yes, sir, and I can't predict whether that will happen or not. I will say that if this motion passes, we'll do everything we can to delineate the days that students are in school despite the fact that it's a recognized holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Hullett. Mr. Wimberly?
I think I understand the amendment. What I would like to have an understanding of is the purpose of it. I mean, it doesn't seem offensive to me, but I just don't understand why we would do it.
Thank you, Mr. Wimberly. Mr. Galbraith?
I was, I don't know if I can modify the amendment, but to me, I don't understand why we would, why we would put, why we would put Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, those at a time that's outside the school calendar. I don't mind referencing the dates that the system will be closed in the calendar rather than footnoting it at the bottom, but I would rather stop at the last day of school and begin at the first day of the new school year with new teacher induction.
Thank you, Mr. Galbraith.
Speaking under Robert's Rules of Order, you can motion to amend an amendment. I will tell you that generally speaking, I advise you not to, just because it tends to muddy the process up and you tend to get confused. So, not you particularly, but in general. One suggestion I've had over the years with that kind of question is, if you'd like to do that, once this amendment is voted on, make a motion to amend based on the results of that vote. In this particular example, if it passes, you might say, "I meant to delete two or three of them," or whatever. But the truth is, under Robert's rules, either process will work.
Ms. Curley?
Oh, yes. Ms. Wimberly, the reason why I wanted to include these is because they are state-recognized holidays, they are federally recognized holidays, and in most cases, the students themselves will probably be discussing those holidays, hopefully, in school. And I think that it is good for context, also good just for reference for parents, because some of those days, banks and other institutions may be closed. So, it's more out of convenience, and it's also to make sure that there is a clear and orderly flow in here to the dates, because the bouncing around is just a little bit cumbersome. And I do think that this is something that is a really nice compromise. You know, we're talking about building bridges, working together on this. This is not putting us in a precarious situation where we're going to be subjected to frivolous lawsuits if we simply have a calendar that is very consistent with both our state and federal government in indicating those dates.
Thank you, Ms. Curley. Dr. Burgos?
Well, she pretty much just said what I was going to say, but I'll add, it was to answer your question, because I do think it lends to the education of our students. I love the fact that our state legislators put Constitution Day on the books, you know, made it a state law so that kids would learn about the Constitution. Are we out of school that day? No. You know, it's very clear, students are still in school, but it lends for, because it does wind up on the refrigerator, don't make any bones about it, this gets posted, not thrown away in households, I know in mine it does, because you've got to know. You know, when do I need to provide for childcare? Being a single mom for those years, you have to know, when the school's closed, you've got to have childcare. So, I love this idea, I hadn't really thought about it, but why not? Go ahead and use this as a teaching opportunity and also respect the traditions and federal and state laws to show when the holidays are, and then putting that it is children not in, or, excuse me, if they are in school that day or not in school, I think it'd be very clear in parentheses. So, I like this idea. We can still keep it as break, and we can respect those who don't want it to be labeled, but we can still recognize the federal and state holidays, and I think it is a good compromise.
Thank you, Dr. Burgos. Ms. Emerson?
Mr. Galbraith, sometimes Labor Day does fall within the school calendar. In this case, I believe Labor Day, you know, it may be at the end of the month, but that's, so it would change.
Thank you, Ms. Emerson. Mr. Hullett?
I agree, I think it is a good compromise, and I can support it. But the one thing, because we're just talking about the federal and state holidays, I think that's fine. Excuse me, the one thing that I think that we would definitely need to keep a very close eye on is if there is any confusion throughout this year, if it needs to be revisited again next year. Because if we do have, if we go through one particular holiday that suddenly 8% of the student body doesn't show up because it was on, and the excuse given when they get to the Student Services is, "Oh, it was on the calendar." Well, then that's something we need to look at to make, if it stays on the calendar, to find another way to present it, or to look at, to revisit this issue again. So, I do think it's a good compromise, though.
Thank you, Mr. Hullett. Dr. Looney?
It appears that you're reaching consensus, and in light of that, I just want to make sure that the staff and I are absolutely clear of what the expectation is, because you're going to be approving a calendar that you haven't seen in format. So, I want to make sure that we don't do something that, we don't interpret what you're asking us to do in a different way. The paragraph that currently cites the policy is gone. We're going to add the appropriate number of columns and associated dates with all state and federally recognized holidays that currently do not exist on the calendar. So, do we need to have a discussion about exactly what those holidays are, or are you going to leave that up to... Or are you going to leave that up to our research and analysis?
Ms. Curly? Would you speak to the amendment?
Sure. I would like to keep it to those holidays that are currently recognized by both our state and federal government because I think that is a good starting point. Constitution Day is already on there. So again, it is filling in those that are appropriate and are currently missing from the calendar.
I understand.
Thank you, Ms. Curly. Our next speaker, Mr. Anderson.
Dr. Looney, will you be putting on here, if we put state and federal holidays, will you be putting on there that school is, if it's open, open and put state and federal holiday next to it so people recognize that this is not specifically the school district being closed, but it is a state and federal holiday?
Mr. Anderson, my intent would be to follow the same formatting that you find on September 17th, which is currently listed as Constitution Day. And in parentheses, you see that students are in school. I would treat all of the other holidays that are currently not listed in a similar format.
Okay, my understanding is that's not a holiday for the state either. It's just to make sure that people recognize that that day is for schools to see. My question really is about, the other ones, are holidays? That one's not a holiday.
Right.
Are, so are you going to identify, or is your intention to identify maybe, or maybe Ms. Curly's intention to identify that these are state and federal holidays or just to list them over there?
Once again, I'll, I'll interpret, so as an example, and I'll use Christmas Day, the 25th, as the example. We will have a separate line for December 25th. It will say Christmas Day. And then it will say, "System Closed." And we will follow a similar format for all of the holidays that are currently not specifically listed on the calendar as presented. If you approve it tonight, you can't see a rough draft. Until after, if you approve it tonight, it will be approved. And then it is what it is, so.
Ms. Curly, is that as to your understanding?
That's to my understanding. And if you felt it was necessary to include some type of asterisk or something beside them and indicate in a footnote that these are currently both state and federally-recognized holidays, if that would help, should there be any frivolous litigation brought forward, you know, please feel free to add that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Curly. Mr. Anderson, did you wish to continue? Then, Mr. Gregory?
Dr. Looney, I would just ask that you use your discretion regarding the policy statement at the bottom of the page, if it can stay, you know, leave it. It was a good effort, so, but if you can't, I'll understand.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
I will say for clarity related to the motion that Ms. Curly made, that motion actually included deleting that, as I understood it. Is that accurate?
I believe it would basically duplicate some of those dates. It was more just from a, a space.
I got you.
Limitation.
Okay, so as we understand your amendment, Ms. Curly, the bottom portion will be deleted?
As I understand.
If space is not allowed.
Okay.
Right, given that we can't see it before it's approved.
We've done a lot of clear, clarity questions, but, so, so really, Mr. Gregory's statement is well-made.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
Just wondering, do we need to pull this and bring it back to a vote next month? So that we have something in front of us? I'm just saying, I mean, seems like there's a lot of clarity, so.
Dr. Looney?
You'd have to put that in a motion if you want that to be considered formally, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Peterson. If there's no further discussion, we will take a vote as to the amendment presented by Ms. Curly and seconded by Mr. Gregory to include all federal and state-recognized holidays in the rows of the proposed calendar, as we understand the amendment. So for clarification, everybody, if you vote yes, you are voting in favor of this amendment to include all state and federal holidays. Mr. King, are we ready to vote? Let's go ahead and vote.
Your vote is 10 yes, 2 no.
Motion passes. Amendment passes. We will now proceed on with discussion as to the amended calendar. Is there any discussion? Dr. Burgos?
I do hate to belabor this, but I realize that one of the reasons that mid-semester break in October and mid-semester break in March were changed to that verbiage from fall break and spring break was to try to avoid the controversy, which of course did not happen, I'm sorry. But it would be nice, I would, I move that we would go ahead and change mid-semester break in the fall and the spring back to fall break and spring break because parents, well, that's just my motion, I'm sorry.
Okay, so you, you'd like to amend the amended calendar to include the first mid-semester break as fall break and the second mid-semester break as spring break?
Correct.
Is there a second? Ms. Emerson seconds the amendment. We will now have discussion on the amendment by Dr. Burgos, seconded by Ms. Emerson. Mr. Hullett?
I would just like to ask, since you're talking consistency through and we have fall, spring, would you consider as part of the amendment changing it to winter break? For the, for the semester break? So then we would have fall, winter, spring break? And then we have summer break as well? That would, that would make the entire.
I don't want to amend the amendment right now. I'd rather just do spring and fall break. I don't want to add more controversy at this point. I would like to just try to get that back because that's what they've always been, fall break and spring break, and everyone knows that. As far as parents planning for vacations. That was my intent of the amendment.
Thank you, Dr. Burgos. Mr. Hullett, would you, would you like to amend the amendment?
I'd like to make an amendment that we also change the semester break to winter break.
According to Mr. Golden's advice, would you prefer to amend this amendment if it passes? Or for, just for clarity's sake?
Sure, why not?
Okay, all right. Okay, so we are still proceeding with discussion on the amendment by Dr. Burgos to change mid-semester break to fall break and the second mid-semester break to spring break. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a vote on the amendment.
Your vote is 11 yes, 1 no.
The amendment passes. Then, the proposed calendar now includes fall break and spring break. Is there any further discussion on the amended calendar? Mr. Hullett?
For continuity's sake, I'd like to amend the calendar to say winter break instead of semester break.
Mr. Hullett has amended, has proposed an amendment to change semester break to winter break? Do we have a second? Ms. Emerson? We have a second. Ms. Emerson seconds the amendment. We will now have discussion on the amendment to change semester break to winter break. Is there any discussion? Seeing, Mr. Wimberly?
I'm probably a no vote because I'm really ready for us to go on to something else.
Thank you, Mr. Wimberly. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a vote on the amendment to change semester break to winter break.
Your vote is 9 yes, 3 no.
The amendment passes. We have now changed the calendar from semester break to winter break. Is there any discussion on the amended calendar? Seeing none, we will move to a vote on the calendar as amended.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. We'll move on to the next item of business, which is the five-year capital outlay plan. And that is located on page 107. Dr. Looney? 10, 109.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board members. We are required by, according, by the county to submit a five-year capital outlay plan. All of the departments of the county do it. This is our best estimate of the resources that we'll need over a five-year period as it relates to capital outlay. I will note, there are two items on, on this request that are new this year. The first one being the, I'm trying to find the right line. Jason, maybe you can, oh, here it is. The third line under the new school building construction, that is a Brentwood area elementary school land purchased for construction. We're asking for your approval of the entire plan, but that is a new item of $6 million. And also, we're, we have added an early childhood development facility and for the 2016-17 year of $5 million. Everything else remains on the plan as it was previously with the exception of some items moving up and down in terms of year. And you will also notice that we have merged two items together, and that is the Northwest area middle school and high school complex. I recommend approval of this five-year capital plan.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Hullett? Move to approve? Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Wimberly? Move to discussion, Mr. Gregory?
Dr. Looney, we had discussions at our work session about the Berry Farms property. And in your words, it's a game changer. Literally thousands of homes have been approved in the Berry Farms complex and the Long Lane, Lad Park, that whole area right there. Page Middle is full. Heritage has seats, but Spring Station is overcrowded and will have to be relieved. The only place to relieve, the only place for relief for those students would be to Heritage. And so I don't see how in the world we can hold out till 2020 for a K through 8 in South Franklin. I just don't know where we're going to put all those kids. Yes, sir, as you know, the second to the last item under the new building construction is South Central Elementary and Middle School Campus, K8. As the board knows, the parcel of land that the board owns adjacent to Oakview Elementary School currently is not buildable due to a lack of sewer. And so quite honestly, we, we think we might need to pursue other options on that parcel of land, look for another piece of property, which is why we're asking for funding for property for that school complex next year. And you're very, you're exactly right. It might be that 17, 18 is the wrong year, might be a year late to go for construction funding. Once again, this is an estimate and, you know, we really won't know how quickly Berry Farms is going to take off until later in this year when the overpass is repaired. But it very well may, it very well may be that we have to move that timeline up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Ms. Curly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your comments. Yes, there has been a lot of construction, especially in that area. I know as well in District 12, too, along South Cruthers and Arno Road. So as we continue to see building patterns change and growth numbers fluctuate, and especially as a new board member, I would like to better understand all of the rationale that has gone into the plan. And not necessarily a really deep dive, but to make sure that we are all very confident in these numbers and that we're all very confident as well in the need and the priority and the justifications for it. Because I do think that that will help guide the county commission as well. On this one, I do feel a bit uncomfortable because I feel like the amount of detail isn't there. Maybe that's because we had a marathon session the other night and I believe by the time we probably reached this one, it was getting pretty late. But I would like to see some more of the assumptions that went into this particular plan. So again, we can partner with our county commissioners and make sure, again, that we are all well in alignment on this. This is a substantial amount of money for capital and I think it, it bears us doing our due diligence and making sure we clearly understand the numbers. Like they say, trust, but verify.
Thank you, Ms. Curly. Mr. Wimberly?
Dr. Looney, perhaps a question for you or Ms. Holman. How does this total capital plan compare to past year's capital plans? Is this a significantly higher number, lower number, about the same? Where are we?
Leslie, do you have that information at your disposal?
We've got some funding for the high school, which will, the Nolan'sville High School, and without having those funds on there, it would have been quite a bit higher. But we're at 263, 917, 017. And I think in the past, it was 300 and something. So it's similar, but lower.
Okay, thank you.
And I would like to add to Mrs. Holman's comments. This in and of itself is not a funding request. This is the capital plan. The board, any funding request would come back to this body and then proceed to the county commission. So this is a planning document. We honestly probably wouldn't do this if it weren't for the requirement of the county and, and their timeline conflicts with our timeline. Your enrollment projections won't come in until January. And so, you know, we're, I appreciate Ms. Curly's, you know, concerns and questions. We do have a little bit of a conflict with timeline, with the county commission's timeline and ours, so.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Ms. Curly?
I would still like for there to be some opportunity for the board, be it in a working session or a special session, just to understand the priority and some of the assumptions that go into the plan. Again, this is a substantial commitment. Growth continues to be one of the big challenges that we face and it's more out of making sure that we understand the thought and rationale that goes into it. And I think it's, it's best to have those conversations on an ongoing basis as opposed to right before we need the capital. So again, I think it would be well worth our time to have those conversations and to maybe have that visibility.
Thank you, Ms. Curly. We can certainly work that into a work session.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no further discussion. We will move to a vote on the five-year capital plan.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. We'll move on to the last item of business, the approval of board policy revision, second reading, policy 4.401, textbook selection and adoption. You have a revised sheet that was placed on your desk this evening. Dr. Looney?
Mr. President, I recommend approval as revised from the, the policy and the work session. Policy meeting and work session.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. Is there any discussion? Mr. Galbraith?
I forwarded the board I'd like to make a, I'd like to make an amendment, sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Galbraith. I neglected to ask for a motion to approve from the floor.
Sorry, thank you.
Mr. Gregory moved to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Cash. Thank you. Now, Mr. Galbraith. Now, Mr. Galbraith.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make an amendment to this policy, which is to strike the last sentence on line, I can't tell if that's 48 or 49, but members of the board may also serve as ex officio members. And let me give you the background. I was the one who proposed this, this language, and I guess it's come on and come off throughout a couple of different policy, policy sessions and work sessions. And so, it came back on, and I'll tell you, my intent behind this, I will, I will just, I will say in no way represents a lack of trust in teachers to, to do their jobs and to select our textbooks. It was simply a, I wanted to ensure, early on in the process, I wanted to ensure that the board members were, were informed and had the ability to, to see these deliberations firsthand. As you know, with the, with the live streaming, I think a lot of you who are there right now can appreciate seeing something live versus seeing the minutes of the meeting tell a completely different story. And, and I think when we're, when we're set to, to make a vote on a textbook selection, the, the comments and the, and the comments both against the textbook and for other textbooks are, will, to me, will weigh rather heavily. So, during these discussions, Dr. Looney has given us the, he's given us the impression and basically assured us that we would have that throughout the, throughout the process, that we would be given copious notes of the, of the meetings and, and the comments. And I was satisfied with that. In addition, what he said last, at the work session was, was that these meetings, while not open meetings necessarily from, to the public, were open to board members to, to sit in on and to observe. And so, between those two things, I was completely satisfied that the intent behind my amendment basically had, was, was served without having this in there, so I'd like to see it stricken.
Thank you, Mr. Galbraith. Second by Mr. Hollett to, to strike the amendment proposed?
To strike members.
To strike, okay. Right. So, the amendment, Mr. Galbraith, and seconded by Mr. Hollett, is to strike, members of the board may also serve as ex officio members, if I understand the amendment. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, we have an amendment to the policy on the floor. Is there a discussion as to the amendment? Ms. Emerson?
I would like to ask Mr. Galbraith a question. I'm unclear as to what that would mean for, are you, are we striking the ability for board members to go and listen and, or, no, okay.
I mean, Dr. Looney can speak to.
As, as I understand, Mr. Galbraith's motion, thank you, thank you, Jay. We would be striking the last sentence on lines, on line 48. That reads, members of the board may also serve as ex officio members with the understanding, which you've already, already had this ability, and I have affirmed that ability, to sit in if you want to. You just don't need to have it in policy. It doesn't do anything other than create that potential fear and perception that you might be weighing in on an issue that, just as I would be.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. Yes, Ms. Emerson?
The other thing I wanted to ask is I got a, I got several responses from different people, and some of them not even in my district, so clearly a cross-section of people, who are real interested in wanting to help with this. They want to help with the, looking for the standards and those kinds of things and being of service. As someone who evaluated a lot of textbooks, or part of a group that evaluated a lot of textbooks last year, it is very cumbersome. I mean, it is, and we've got a lot of books. We've got 20 different subject areas, which means multiple books probably in each one of those areas for the year. So, my contention has always been, more hands make lighter work, you know, in terms of getting it done more expeditiously, and we are going to be kind of under a time crunch anyway. Taxpayers support this board, and all the education, Williamson County, 70, you know, cents roughly of their dollar comes to pay to us, or comes for us to work with, whether or not they have kids in the system or not. If they are interested, is there a, a way that they could participate if they were so inclined to want to do that? We have retired teachers, I know, that would, I've had calls from them, and because they felt, they weren't sure whether or not this would exclude them or not, because they, they've taught math, and they know, and they would like to have the opportunity to, in their area of expertise, to be able to weigh in on this.
Thank you, Ms. Emerson. We are actually speaking and discussing as to the amendment by Mr. Galbraith.
I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. Do you have any discussion as to the amendment, as it says?
I'm sorry, thank you.
Ms. Curley?
Yes. Actually, I would like for that to remain. So, I think it's important that if the board wishes to serve, it's clear. Again, it's, it's policy, and it says, you know, we, we may. It doesn't say that we shall. And I think it's important that we make that distinction, and even if it's understood, what harm is there in placing it on there? And, and again, it's just for a point of clarity, and I see no issue with leaving it.
Thank you, Ms. Curley. Mr. Wimberly?
I support Mr. Galbraith's amendment. You know, I think as, you know, we are the, I think it's inappropriate, as I've said several times, for a board member to be on a committee that reports up to the board. I can also say from personal experience that a board member getting involved in the process is a reality. I remember vividly last year spending several hours at my kitchen table going through 900 pages of documents on, on the textbooks. In fact, I think those pages were delivered to my front door with kind of a note, Rick, read this. So, I think that there is plenty of opportunities for a, a board member to be involved in, in the process. I, I also think that as the, the final decision makers on, on the recommendations, that our decisions should be void of the process. And I also believe that the process should be void of the influence of the board. In other words, if you're involved in the process, it makes it very difficult to take a high-level view at the results as opposed to, as the results of the process as opposed to the process. So, I support that amendment, and thank you for it.
Thank you, Mr. Wimberly. Mr. Peterson?
I was going to say, I think the key thing is, is that Superintendent Looney is not a voting member, and so, and we are. We vote on ultimately the committee's recommendation, and as we've discussed, you know, for hours and hours now, it seems, everything is provided. You're able to do as much as you want. So, I, as well, since this, I think this is the third or fourth or eighth time that this has been in and out, but, yeah, I, the key, the key factor is, is that we vote, and Superintendent Looney doesn't. That's why he's an ex officio member. So, I, I agree with Mr. Galbraith as well.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Dr. Burgos?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree, going back and forth gets a bit cumbersome, so I'm sorry for that. But I do want to weigh in, because one of the things that Mr. Wimberly said struck me. We do have several committees that we serve on, that we then report to the board for a vote. And the reason for those committees is to help understand the process, to help fact gather, because indeed, we are a large board, and we need to have subcommittees. And so, I don't think it's altogether unusual. In fact, it's quite common for us to have committees where board members are on, so that we can be involved in the process, just to make sure that the process is working well. There's been, as you all know, a lot of concern about this process, and I want to help reassure the public that we are doing our best to protect the children, the content of the books. Several people who spoke today at public comment are concerned about the content, and I have no intent of going in and taking over any committee at all. But I would like the privilege of being able to sit in and listen and insert myself in the process to make sure that I understand and what's going on, and, and I can report back to the board like we do for every other committee. So, I think it would help reassure the public. I would like to leave the verbiage in. I understand Mr. Galbraith's amendment entirely, and if this process does work, maybe we can admit it next year. But for this year, because we're in transition, and there is question from the community and from several of my constituents, I think it would be a reassuring thing to leave it in for this year.
Thank you, Dr. Burgos. Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say that language is very important in a contract, if you will. This, this leaves the door wide open for, for everyone to be able to express themselves or be involved as much as they, they would like. I don't think this language is going to hurt anything. I, I would hope it doesn't hurt Dr. Looney's feelings or anyone else's. I feel that just, you know, more ears and eyes on a situation with good dialogue brings a better result. And that's why I feel I, I support this amendment as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. Mr. Hollett?
Well, in 2007, I was chair of the CTE textbook committee for the county, and sat in the room, and let me just tell you, from the chair of the committee, if you would have walked into the room, I would have looked at you and gone and thought, what are you doing here? Because, not in a disrespectful way, but what do you have to add if you're not a subject matter expert on, you know, career and technical education? Now, the thing is, and if we have this in here, you can go in on any committee that you want to, and I would have thought of that. I would have also been thinking, right or wrong, I'm going to be answering a lot of questions, because this board member is going to come over to me and say, what exactly does this mean? Unless the board member happens to be a subject matter expert on exactly what we're talking about. And so, what would have happened was, I would have had, as a teacher and as the textbook committee chair, and trying to help everybody else that was in the room, as they're going over their books, and I'm going over my books, and we're going over together, this feeling of, you know, when are you going to be looking over my shoulder? When are you going to be doing that? And it's an uneasy feeling to be in the room, because ultimately, it's the school board, you know, and that's, that's the other part of it. If you're invited into the room, you know, like Jay said, with all of his research into finding out that it's actually inherent in what we do anyway, and that you can come and see, we can all go in and see it. But when it says that you may serve as ex officio and that you can do this, it's, it just kind of has a sinister appeal to it. You know, like you're going to be in there, you know, at any, whether you're a subject matter expert or not. And that's, I know that we'll come to that eventually in the, in the rest of these discussions, but that's why I support Jay pulling it off of there. It was his idea, he wanted to take it off. I support it pulling off there, because we're invited in anyway. And I would also say that if we're not subject matter experts, please don't muddy the water.
Thank you, Mr. Hollett. Ms. Curley?
You know, your, your point is, we'll take him, Mr. Hollett, on that, and I can understand where someone may get that sense and that feeling, but I would also state that, you know, someone could say the same if, when Dr. Looney's in there. I mean, it could be, oh, my goodness, the superintendent's in here, and get nervous, potentially. And he's certainly more recognizable than, than we are. And at the same time, you know, as Beth mentioned, there are concerns from the community. And, and those concerns stem around the heavy control of certain publishers when it comes to textbooks, and the influence that they yield when it comes to very influential educational organizations in Nashville. And when we have lobbyists for Pearson Publishing, who are also on those boards of those key organizations, it doesn't take long for people to start making leaps and going, how much influence is getting in here? And this is more of a de facto rubber stamp when it gets to my local school board. And I'm not saying that we do that, but I'm saying that that perception is real. And when those lobbyists for Pearson are also on boards, and their spouse is a salesperson for Pearson, it makes it even more alarming. So, are there, is there maybe a need for some checks and balances? I would say absolutely. And this is policy. This is policy. We have a policy committee. You know what? If we're seeing that leaving this in here doesn't serve a purpose, that it doesn't work, we can change it. But what I'm also trying to convey to you is that there is a very real concern, and legitimate concern, about the influence that's yielded by certain publishers in particular.
Thank you, Ms. Curley. I would like to address just one of the comments that you made, in that the, everybody who serves on these committees must take an oath, saying that they will not, they are not influenced in any way. Dr. Looney, is that correct?
It is, and I'd like to add, it's your policy, do what you want to with it. I will tell you, although the law makes me an ex officio member, I have never set foot in one of those meetings, because I recognize as someone that has higher authority than teachers, and I would argue that you do as well, I would taint the process. I would create, even though I believe the teachers believe in me, I would, I would change the culture of that meeting, and I would, I would argue that you will too. Now, the good news is, is that I, as well as this body, has every comment, every note, every, every, in fact, you could read every single book. It will be available online. But when you step foot in one of those meetings, the culture changes, just like the culture changes when I walk into a classroom. It's just by the nature of our position. And so, I, it's true, the law requires me to be an ex officio member, but I do not, I do not, I choose not to do that, because I don't want to impact the process negatively.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. Is there any further discussion as to the amendment by Mr. Galbraith in regards to striking line 48, members of the board may also serve as ex officio members? Seeing none, we will move to a vote on the amendment. Again, just for clarity, if you vote yes, you are in favor of striking that verbiage.
Your vote is 5 yes, 7 no.
The amendment fails. We will move to further discussion as to the policy as it reads. No further discussion. We will move to a vote as to the policy. Ms. Emerson?
I'm sorry.
This call.
Your vote is 9 yes, 3 no.
Policy is approved, and that concludes the business of the board. We'll call this meeting adjourned.